Okay, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for December 11th, 2014. The first item on our agenda is to confirm our future meeting dates. We have a meeting on December 18th, which is a week from today.
Yep.
Is it still good for everyone?
Yep.
Okay. Why don't we at the 18th then confirm our January dates
Okay.
at the meeting on the 18th.
So this is our last meeting for the year?
No, the December 18th.
The 18th, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then we'll confirm January dates on the 18th.
Okay.
All right, approval of payroll and vendor warrants.
Approval of current payroll and vendor warrants.
A second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have citizens speak and then we'll move on to the audit. Is there anyone here tonight who wanted to address the board at citizen speak? No. Okay, seeing none, then we will move on back to
Okay.
Next time is a meeting with our auditors, Richard Sullivan from Powers &amp; Sullivan, and we've member of the audit committee, if you'd like to come up and join us at the table, please feel free, I don't know if anyone else from the audit committee is
Want to get the rest of your audit came up?
If you want.
It's up to your call.
They'd like to, they're welcome, they're the ones that did the work, right?
They did. Right.
You just have to pull your chairs up if you want to come up and join us at the table.
It's your call, guys. Come on.
Don't be shy.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Would you like to just introduce yourselves?
Sure. My name is Richard Sullivan, I'm a partner of Powers &amp; Sullivan, responsible for the town of Milton's audit engagement.
I'm Haley Green, I was the senior auditor on this town. And I'm Katie Sinessi, and I was the supervisor on the audit.
Thank you, welcome. I'm Katie Conlon, I'm the Board of Selectmen. Why don't we introduce ourselves since we haven't met everyone?
Tom Hurley. Dennis Cohen.
And our town administrators, Anne Marie Fagan.
Yes, we work closely together.
And Mrs. Rizzi, and you probably know both of them better than you know the rest of us. Well, thank you for joining us tonight, we're here to talk about the audit of our fiscal 14 financial statements.
Right.
So Dick, would you like to get us started?
I would like to get you started, and I'm going to do my best because for some reason I got everything except my notes, but I think it's all in my head, so I'm going to try to.
Okay.
What I'd like to do, if I could, is just kind of talk about first, a little bit about the three reports that are issued, and I'm going to tell you what's behind those, and I like to segment them, like talk about the financials first, then talk about the federal awards, and then finish up with the management letter. I also want to share with you how the process went, in terms of how we go about doing it, give you an idea of what we audited, so you can feel like that we certainly kicked the tires, and also give you my impressions of how the year went, from the standpoint of how did you end up at the end of fiscal 14. So, the way we go about the audit, we actually break it into two sections, we call what is a preliminary phase and is a year-end phase. The preliminary phase, I think, occurred in April of this year, where we come out and we do, we audit the elements of your balance sheet, and also things that don't relate to the balance sheet that aren't date-specific, meaning June 30th specific. So, for instance, the budget is what we audit. We look at long-term debt, because most of the time, all the debt activity has occurred before we come out for the preliminary. We do the single audit, which is that audit's required under A133 standards, because you receive more than a half a million dollars' worth of federal grants, and expend more than a half a million dollars' worth of federal grants, we try to get that done. We do our test of transaction, which is essentially taking 30 transactions from your revenue cycle, from your payroll cycle, from your disbursement cycle, and we also do a little bit of journal entry testing, and we look at all those things for all the proper authorizations, the proper supporting documentation, the proper recording, and the general ledger to make sure that's right. And in the meantime, we also format the report and do all the background stuff that really you don't have to pay attention to, but we have to because of the peer review standards that we have to adhere to. And then we came out in August, or just near the end, the middle to late August, it was actually middle of August, I think it was. I think that's significant, just to point out, because that means the books were closed pretty quick, which doesn't always happen with our clients, so I think that's just something just for you to note, as part of this evaluation. And we begin what I would call walking down the balance sheet. We audit cash, we audit receivables, we audit your capital assets, we audit all the major elements of your liabilities, which include warrants payable, accrued payable, compensated absences, you've got that OPEB liability that's out there, and we also review to make sure if any of the debt or has changed or whatever, to see how that is all come about. So, when you're thinking about what we're auditing, just to give you an idea, you had about, you know, $42 million worth of cash. We put a lot of emphasis on cash, because it's probably the riskiest element of your balance sheet. It's liquid, and it has legs, so we kind of tried to pay attention to that. We also do the intergovernmental receivables, but realistically, the top half of your balance sheet has two major components, cash, and then what we call your capital assets. Now, this is both for what we call the governmental funds, as well as the enterprise funds. And then when you're walking down the rest of the balance sheet, we look hard at warrants payable, because there's a thing called cutoff issues. We want to make sure that all the expenses or expenditures that should be reported in fiscal 14 are in fact done that way. So we look at one month, two months, and three months out after year-end, to just make sure that nothing was paid, or nothing that was paid, that should have been reflected as part of FY14, was omitted. And we incorporate those types of things into our testing. We didn't really find any issues, just so you know. There's always a search entry that we make, and most of the time, that's for capital projects, but there was no issues from a budgetary standpoint that we came across. And then, realistically, what's happened, interestingly enough, is the OPEB liability is now the biggest liability that you have on your balance sheet. It's higher than your debt.
Can you explain what an OPEB is?
Sure. It's other post-employment liability. What it relates to is, there was something out there called GASB 45, that said, cities and towns now have to recognize a portion of the cost of setting aside money for the future health benefits, mostly health, can be dental also, that they're going to pay their retirees. And technically, what they want you to do is take a sum of money, put it in a trust, and have it begin to accumulate for those future retiree benefits. And what happens is, is you meet what's called pay-as-you-go, which is your current obligation, there's a portion for the future obligation that you're not meeting, and that gets shown as liability on your books. And that was just under $40 million at the end of June. And correspondingly, you had $39 million worth of debt. So, it's actually, it's become a big part of your balance sheet. So now, when we take a look at this, now, this is part of the financial statements, it's called, what I call the GASB 34 financial statements. And what they do is, they, there's a different element to these, and they're essentially full accrual. But, the part of your balance sheets are your financial statements, where I would say right now, still the rating agencies pay attention to, are on pages 16 and 18, which is the balance sheet for your governmental funds, and also your expenditures of your governmental funds. And what I can share with you is, in the back, is also another statement called the budgetary statement, which shows basically how you run your town, you know, you run it based on your appropriations and your estimated receipts, and everything else after that is kind of like, there's some massaging that goes on to bring them to what we call gap compliance statements. Town had a good year, from both perspectives. A $1.9 million surplus on the fund-based statements, and you had a $1.2 million surplus on the budgetary statements. Revenues came in much better than you anticipated by the point of almost $2.3 million, and you had about a half a million dollars of turnbacks, which is basically the portion of the appropriation that wasn't spent, because it wasn't needed to meet the operational requirements of the year. That half a million dollars, by the way, is less than 1% in terms of your total appropriation, because you had about an $80 million, $83 million appropriation, sorry, $84 million, and you spent $83. From a percentage perspective, your unassigned fund balance, which is made up of your, what used to be called an unreserved general fund, then you have your three stabilization funds that get wrapped up into that, is $9.4 million, which is over 10% of your total budget. What I can share with you is, that's a very good number. I think general fund, in and of itself, was about, bear with me just for a second, just under $7 million, just the general fund unreserved, not including the stabilization funds, and that comes in at about 7%, which is also a good number. I like these numbers, because I do remember, there was a time when I would come before you and tell you, your reserves were nowhere near what they needed to be. And progressively, over the several years, you've got to the point where your rating agencies are recognizing it, it's being reflected in what they're giving you for your rating, and the fact that you're sustaining it is important to me, too, because I think your stabilization fund had 2 point, was it $2 million in it, the general fund stabilization, give or take? That's all right, I got it right here. I got it right here. See, this is the part where my notes would have helped a little bit, sorry, Paul, but 2.7 million, which is awesome. It's great. And the reason that's combined with the unassigned fund balance is because it's not restricted in its use, it can be basically used for whatever you want to. And again, that unassigned fund balance, at the end of the year, was less, about $1.9 million, which is what you use to fund the FY15 budget. So you had a decent set of reserves come the end of the year, which I was very happy with. When you think about the significant items in here, things that, if I were you, I'd say, what do I need to know? You had a refunding in FY14. It resulted in about a $1.8 to $1.7 million savings, cash savings in your future debt service, which I think is terrific. You also borrowed some money, like you normally do, of about $4 million for various projects, various infrastructure projects, there was a bunch of things you did at the school, I think there was some HVAC work that was done, you did some work on tennis courts, you did some various things that all came in, was part of the governmental assets. On the enterprise side, you borrowed about $4 million, and that was mostly entirely for infrastructure. There was a couple of vehicles involved, but most of it was relative to the infrastructure. Those are the things that happened. The refunding, I think, is significant, because you actually borrowed less to pay off more, and it was because of the difference in the interest rates, which I think was great. I mentioned the fact that I think your operations were positive. What else would the, oh, this is kind of, I don't want to bore you with it, but, in the past, I think last year, I talked about the change in the audit report, there was a significant change from looking at FY12's audit report to FY13's. There's no change in that this year. But, there was a, GASB 65 was implemented in FY14, and what that did is it created this thing called deferred outflows and deferred inflows. I don't want to bore you with it, but what it means is that, there's a, they wanted to create another element on your statement of net position and on the fund base, to basically prep you for something that's coming down the road in FY15, which is GASB 68. And I'll talk a little bit about that when I get to the management letter. But, what you used to have on your balance sheet before was called deferred revenues, we don't refer, use that term anymore, it's called unavailable revenues. And then there's something else that could actually appear on the statement of net position that used to appear as part of the debt footnote, and that's a gain or a loss on a refunding, and that now is a component of your statement of net position and your liabilities down below. So that's, those are the things that I think, if I was saying, other than the fact that I think budgetarily and fiscally, you had a good year, if somebody was saying to you, what are the things in here that I think are, I need to know? You need to know the refunding, you need to know that you had your normal capital projects or CIP that went in place, there's a little bit of a change in the way the statement of net position is shown, and the way the governmental balance sheet is shown. And those would be the things that I think, if you were comparing FY13 to 14, what are the changes, and what are the things you should know, those are the ones that I would highlight for you. Everything else, when you look at your revenues and your expenditures, revenues went up about 8%, correspondingly, expenditures went up 8%. So there was a nice linear curve, in terms of the way I saw the budget work, and the way I saw both your revenue and expenditure patterns work. And honestly, the things we focus most on are the general fund, because the non-major funds are all your special revenues, which are federal and state grants, they come and go, the timing of those change all the time, and you also, of course, had your capital project fund, which is shown as a major fund. So, thinking about the financial statements as a whole, present yourself well to anybody who's looking at them, particularly the bond rating agencies. From an audit perspective, really, the only thing we own is the opinion, and that's called an unmodified opinion, which in layman's terms is a clean opinion, it doesn't get any better. I think you should know that when we were here, I think I've probably used this term before, we kind of come in like the Marines, and we try to get in and out, and the two weeks we spent here, I was very happy with the cooperation we received. My team was very well taken care of, I liked the fact that the responses to our questions were timely, the information we received was accurate, and I think the cooperation was where it needs to be, in order to make everybody win in a situation like this. You know, and of course, every year, it's our job to come in with, we always come in with our professional skepticism, but we also do a couple of little things here and there, just little curveballs, maybe wake-filled knuckleballs, just find out if everybody's ready. And most of those questions were answered, well, I should say most of them, they were all answered fine. So we didn't have any issues with, from the standpoint of proposing any permanent entries to the general ledger, which means the information you've been getting was fairly accurate. I mentioned that journal entry testing that we do. June 30th is the demarcation line for us coming in and being able to do your audit. We pay attention to journal entries that are done before, and journal entries that are done after. And the reason we look at after is to make sure you're not just trying to fix everything at the end, so that the auditors are going to be happy. We didn't find any of that either. So, I feel comfortable saying that when you receive information, when you receive it, it's accurate, and it reflects what's been happening from the, you know, in terms of operations, as you go. So that's a good report.
That's good news.
Yes. The second report, if I couldn't, but I'll get through this and answer any questions you want, I think it's better to go that way?
Sure.
Is the federal report, it's called the Report on Federal Awards. This is a report that has three opinions in it, one is opinion on compliance with laws and regulations, are you doing things the way you're supposed to do them? The other report is on compliance with the administration of the actual federal programs, your major federal programs that you have. You spent just under $2.1 million in FY14. Your biggest grant is your special education grant, that was $1.3 million. We tested that. That equals about 64% of your total federal expenditures. And the way we tested, we use the guidelines of the federal government to do so, it's called a compliance supplement. This is not the auditor coming in using audit judgment, they tell us what we need to do, how we need to do it, and what the expected results are. The results of this, these three opinions, they're both all unmodified, there were no findings, and there were no question costs. The final document is the management letter. Now, I always say that this is a letter that's designed to tell you what we think needs to be fixed, and doesn't tell you what we think is going okay. What you have in here was, let's see, there were 11 comments from the prior year. Four of them were resolved, or almost near resolution. The four that I show resolved were relative to the outstanding checks, cash accounts not in the cash book, police details, which I understand a new system is being worked on, and reconciliation of cash. But there are a number of unresolved ones. You know, I still think that a purchase order system would be beneficial to the town, and that's still there. We believe that there should be, one of the best internal controls you can have is reconciliation of cash, reconciliation of receivables, reconciliation of anything that should be reconciled. And tax title and tax floor closures, we still think are a little weak in that area. The payroll withholding accounts are something that we began focusing on two to three years ago, and the reason is, is if those are out of whack, you could have a problem with not having enough expenditures on the books, or having too much expenditures on the books, based on the balance. And what we'd like to see is those accounts, as they relate to the withholdings for like health insurance and things, be reconciled on a regular basis, and understand what the balances are in them. The other ones relate to cross-training, student activities accounts, and those are the two remaining ones that kind of are what we consider from a prior year, unresolved. Going into the new year, we came up with three comments. In addition to the purchase order system, we think that regardless if you have one or not, I believe there's no chief procurement officer at the time of our audit, there wasn't a true CPO. And that's kind of a requirement that the AG's office, or IG's office, I forget, is looking to see. And what it does is, it basically creates a responsibility of one person, and maybe two, sometimes they have one at the school and one at the town, who's responsible for just making sure that things that should be bid are bid according to what MGL 30B says. And that's what that comment's all about. The treasurer's bank account, we became aware of an account that's kind of not on the books, that manual checks are being written from. I can't say that I saw anything bad going on there, but that's not something we'd like to see. There shouldn't be one receipt and/or expenditure that goes out of the treasurer's office that isn't either through the cash receipts module or on a warrant. And so what we're saying is, get rid of this account.
Is that a $0 press account?
No, it's not.
There's a balance in it?
There's a balance in it.
Balance not in the books?
Balance not on the books.
How much?
Well, I can't remember what the balance was, does anybody remember that?
Well, we have disbursements.
We showed the disbursements, there was hundreds of thousands of dollars in two months, it was like, I think it was 162 or 161, 151 for June and July. I don't remember what the balance was in there. But it's not, it's not in Zobrio, it's not on the GL, and I know what he was using it for, he was kind of using it as a clearing account, and he told me why. The best I can share with you is, I did not think the reason was warranted, and it's unusual, because I don't see it in any of my other clients.
So what kind of revenue were going into that account?
Sometimes he would receive money from, he would receive receipt for which there had to be a split. The split would occur among, whether it be a lien process or whatever, so he'd take the receipt, he'd put it into this account, and then he would cut checks to the various components of the split that's supposed to occur, essentially bringing it down to zero for that particular transaction.
And it's when he cut the checks that the revenue would get recognized?
Yeah, and I'm saying, bring it into the system and allocate it like it normally would be allocated.
So at year-end, we got a significant cutoff problem?
I wouldn't call it a cutoff problem, no. What you have, though, is activity, and again, I just picked two months, June and July, $161,000 of ins and outs, of ins and outs in June, and $151,000 of ins and outs in July.
Right, but they sense there's a balance in that account at June 30th, that's revenue not recorded in the right period.
Could be, yes. It's not significant, but it's still there. And the idea behind this, and I always kind of focus on this, it's not necessarily the balance at the end of the month or the year, it's what happened.
Buying a transaction.
Yeah.
Can you continue with your example, of the ins and outs?
I wish I could. You know what, I'm trying to rethink it right now. Jim said that sometimes he used it, he actually used it for postage sometimes, he used it for miscellaneous expenditures, like maybe for sending out tax liens and so forth, and the receipts were for various things for which there was a split. The other thing was student activity accounts, and this is just kind of a recommendation, it's not mandated, but Masbo and the DESE have come out with a thought process that says, annually, there should be an audit done at least by the school business manager of the accounts, and then once every three years, it's somebody like an independent auditor, accounting firm, should take a look at those accounts. So that's what that was all about.
And you often find that when there's a problem in a school, it's, you know, with something missing, it's in student activity.
And you know, sometimes the amounts fairly are not what I would call significant, but it's certainly the kind of stuff that hits the papers above the fold.
Right.
So that's why we think it's a risk area that needs to be looked at. The final two things are comments, and just informational. One is, to be ready for the FY15 audit, you'll need another actuary report for OPEB, which I think is probably in place, and is easy to do. And the other one is, getting back to the GASB 68. GASB 68 is going to be implemented as part of the FY15 audit, financial statements. And it was, that GASB 65, I was talking about inflows and outflows, that kind of teed up the ability for them to report the unfunded liability of your pension plan. And what's going to happen, essentially, is right now, or as of 1-113, you had an unfunded pension plan of $35 million. Now, first of all, your funding ratio is almost, is 71.3%, which is actually pretty good. But, that $35 million, which had always been part of your footnotes in the past, is now going to be, to some degree, present value calculated, now going to appear as a component of your net position. We don't call it a liability, we call it a deferred inflow, but the bottom line is, it's going to be a reduction to your net position.
I thought the, I might be wrong, because I haven't had to do one yet either, but I thought the liability itself, the difference between the planned assets and the actual present value was a liability, the deferred inflow and outflow was the payments between your measurement date and after that.
My understanding is, it's going to appear in that component of deferred inflows. And the idea behind it, though, is, and if I'm wrong, I apologize, but my understanding is, it's going to be part of that, and it's not going to be the $35 million, but it's going to be a significant number. One of the things I've been asked by people is, with this GASB 68, is this going to change how people look at your financial statements, meaning like S&amp;P? And my answer is no, I don't, not at all, and I'll tell you why. They read the footnotes, they know what your unfunded liability is, they've already considered it and vetted it as part of their assessment of your rating. So, all this is doing, in my opinion, I think it's not a bad idea, it's taking some information that's been in the, let's call it the bowels of the statement, and putting it right up front, so people can't not see it. And if you're not a sophisticated reader of the financial statements, at least it's going to be something that is going to be right there in front of you. If I could just, one second, talk about, about two to three years after this is going to be put in, I see the same thing happening for OPEB.
Yep.
So, right now
That's another $50 million liability.
Right now, we've got a $40 million ARC liability, but your liability is much larger than that, in terms of the true funding of what you're supposed to do. And so they're going to throw away the old way of calculating the OPEB liabilities appears right now, and they're going to just say, how much is your total liability, the present value of that, and they're going to stick that on the balance sheet. And I believe there's some exposure drafts already by the GASB related to this.
Which, at this point, that's probably about $50 or $60 million of additional liability coming out of OPEB.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So, okay, I've taken up your time, we've talked about the management letter, the federal awards, and the financial statements. I guess the thing to leave you with the management letter, there's no material weaknesses here, there's no significant deficiencies. Again, we're kind of in the business of negative assurance, we kind of have to talk about the things that are, we think need improvement. But I, as a businessman, and as a person who is, you know, your auditor, I mean, overall, I thought the audit went well. And I appreciate the fact that people listen, take into account these management letter comments, because any time you're criticized, it's not a fun thing to have done, so.
I guess my concern with the management letter comments is, the ones that are reconciliation in nature are internal control in nature.
They are.
They may not be significant weaknesses, but
That's why we have them in there. We believe that, I mean, probably one of the strongest internal controls you can have, in one form or another, is a reconciliation of the accounts.
Right, there's no excuse for not reconciling an account.
I agree with that.
So, I guess in that respect, do we have a timetable for when any of that's going to start happening? Because I consider that, I consider that, you know, even though, like Rich says, it's, in his opinion, not a significant weakness, it's something left unchecked, it's just not a good situation.
The difficult thing about most of these reconciliations, and I don't mean to say it this way, but they tend to gravitate towards the treasurer's office.
Right. And that's one of the challenges, is because there are different elected boards and elected officials in town, and
And that's an elected position.
It's an elected position, and it's not a position that reports up to our
Right.
board, obviously.
Right.
But, at the same time, we did emphasize last year during the audit, that we wanted to make sure that town management, and I know the town administrator has been following the treasurer and with other departments, to try to address some of the issues from last year's letters, and we probably need to redouble our efforts on that for the current issues, as well as the unresolved prior year issues.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, there's a number of them, the, you know, the
Well, tax title.
Right. Yeah, after the write-offs, $51,000 variance.
Withholding accounts, out
Police details.
No, police details is actually, that's more of a systematic thing, where we had like three different places where we were trying to account for the thing, and we just wanted to consolidate it. My understanding is, the police are putting in a new system to handle that.
New process, yes.
So I actually had that in process of being fixed.
And I guess my other question is, in terms of the compensated absences, I know it's a manual system, were you able to sufficiently audit the manual system?
Yes, we were. You know, and I actually thought about this, I mean, I think it helps, the reason I like to see it centralized, is if it stays at the departmental level, and for lack of a better word, it can't be monitored, you know, the people who maybe take vacations or have some time off, it doesn't get recorded, and, you know, and we've seen that when, sometimes when longtime employees, and you find out that it doesn't seem like they've taken a vacation in 30 years. I just try to avoid that. I question maybe whether or not I should keep it in there, but since it already made I just try to avoid that. It's, I question maybe whether or not I should keep it in there, but since it already made its way, I decided to keep it in there for this year. But I did not have an issue trying to audit it. And again, two ways we audit it. We actually do the specific testing and then analytically, and it still makes sense.
Okay, good, good.
Any other comments or questions from either the board or the audit committee or town management?
I've got a few more, more observations, I think, than anything. Because the audit report looked good. It really did. And it looks like you did a really good job. But just a couple of, I guess, things I noted when I was looking through it. Number one is, if you look, our, our fixed assets from 2013 to 2014 went down, which kind of means that we're depreciating assets quicker than we're replacing assets. Which is.
Well, that, you know.
Can be indicative of a concern.
You know what? I would have said that earlier, because I, you know, when you remember when we had the big school project. I mean, your schools had gotten to the point where they were falling apart, and you had that big, big project. Your, if I look at note number four, I, I would consider your asset base, even though depreciation took more of it this year, and the additions did not, let's say, reflect or equal the depreciation. Your asset base, if I could do a quick calculation, is probably about 65 to 70% like new, if you want to use that term. You've got 217 million dollars of assets that can be depreciated, and only 69,000 has been depreciated so far.
Right, and mostly 10 years.
So I think the fact that assets went down is partly reflective of what the additions were made in prior years.
My other concern is, we've got, how much in cash?
It's like.
30 million or so, 36 million?
More than that, actually. It's like, cash in investments was about 40 million.
Yeah, and what we have, cash, cash equivalents, 36 million, almost 37 million.
Yep.
And it's not really an audit issue, but do we do any overnight investing or have any cash management?
We don't have repos. You're not, you're not really doing repos. I believe what Jim is doing is probably trying to take advantage of what he can in terms of what's out there. You know, I don't.
Just an overnight, you know, sweep account, even if you're only getting a quarter percent on 36 million dollars, does add up after a while.
That's something that is definitely worth considering. I actually have a little thought process in my, back of my head that I know treasurer's careers are not made by the amount of interest they make, but it can be ended by the losses they could incur trying to make more interest. So I think there's a tendency to be a conservative approach as it relates to that. The, another alternative to consider, whether it be repos or not, is MMDT. They provide a reasonable safety valve with a little bit of a higher return.
Right, and we do use some MMDT, I know that, but MMDT is mass municipal depository. It's, it's a kind of a mutual fund that's, that's government investment.
And it's very liquid. It's, you know, you can, the money's there when you want it. There's no delay.
Let's see, what else did I have? Again, just a, and just refer everybody to page 14 of the financial statements, only because it's a really good statement to look at. It's the, it's the full accrual basis statement of activities. And the way it's set up, because we always think of our budgets with respect to, you know, what we're gonna appropriate for money. And, you know, for instance, we look at the schools, and the school's 35 million dollars. You never really focus on what that is fully loaded up in terms of when, this statement will actually take all the fringe benefits, employee benefits and everything else.
That's correct.
And kind of allocate them to the various general government, public safety, education, public works, so on and so forth. So when you look at this, you know, schools are 69 million dollars. General government's 9 million, public safety's almost 20 million dollars. And then it runs through and it takes out the things, the revenues that are coming in directly for those departments, comes down to a net revenue and expense. When you look at that net, that's what your tax dollars are really funding. That's what your real estate taxes, your excise taxes, and your unrestricted local aid are going to pay. So, and when you look at that, something a little less than 10% went to general government, about 22% went to police, 58% went to education. So between those three, about 90% of all of our tax revenue goes to those three. Less than 10% goes to everything else.
Right.
Including public works.
That's right.
So, so I thought that was just interesting.
I'm gonna use that sometime.
Okay.
I won't give you credit. No, but that's, that's exactly what this is designed to do, is basically designed to tell that the reader of the financial statement is what the net cost is after taking in the direct revenues associated with it. And.
And again, this does include OPEB, so it's inflated a little bit for the OPEB expense.
Yeah, but it includes pension expense.
Yep.
All your health benefits and some of the state and county charges.
Right.
Anything else, Tom, or anyone?
I'm good. Don't think I do, no. Otherwise, great job.
Okay, well then, thank you to the entire Powers and Sullivan team. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
The audit committee and everyone who, and the town accountant who work very hard in this, I know, so, thank you, everyone.
Good. Happy holidays.
Same to you.
You too, thanks.
Thank you, thank you. The next item on our agenda tonight, we'll just wait for the room to clear. A moment. The next meeting, the next discussion on our agenda is a meeting with several representatives. We have some appointed and elected officials in the room who are going to join us for discussion of town meeting and the town meeting process. And I think a couple of them just stepped outside the room, so hopefully they will come back. But the ones who are here, if you'd like to come up, we're gonna have to pull some chairs up to the table. And I know that moderator is going to lead us off, and he just stepped outside. So we'll just take a minute to get everyone.
Hey, Alex.
Seemed. Evening, everyone. Need to move down a little bit. My stuff, I'll be back afterwards. Thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. Brian Walsh is gonna get us started, but this is mainly to have a discussion about town meeting and how we might improve the process of putting together the warrant and facilitating things at town meeting a little bit better than we may have been. So Brian and I have talked, but he, he's gonna lead us off tonight and get us started. Brian?
Thank you, Kate. So, thank you. Good to, good to see you all, members of our board of selectmen, the chairman of our planning board, our town clerk, we have our warrant committee chair and secretary here. I want to thank you, Kate, in particular, in the board of selectmen for getting us together, because several of us have heard from town meeting members about concerns with this past October's town meeting. Now, I heard from, I think, three in total. There are 279 elected town meeting members, so we're not talking, you know, an overwhelming majority, but the concerns were there, and we're hearing things that we don't necessarily typically hear. So I believe there were, there were sort of different things that were happening individually in that meeting that by themselves wouldn't qualify as an area that you really would have to focus on for needing improvement. But I think collectively, in particular, they, they really resulted in a meeting that caused many members some disappointment and varying levels of frustration. And so consequently, I think it is a good idea that we get together and, and see what we can do to prove that. That said, I also think it's important to note how effective the town meeting process is, and this is also something I would share with town meeting members. Where even at this meeting, those articles and recommendations that members were not comfortable with did not pass. And isn't that the power of town meeting? They had that opportunity. So in fact, I can assure you that other moderators will tell you that zoning articles, in particular, typically generate some of the longer and more intense discussions. And we, by design, focused that fall town meeting on zoning articles. That was a focus of that. So, and they are important to every community. And as a result, they require a two-thirds vote to pass, which is a very high bar. So this issue of intensity around zoning articles is not unique to Milton. However, Madam Chairman, I know that you want to discuss and identify items that we can see as a group, we can begin to determine and initiate positive changes for. Want to apologize for my voice. I've got a cold this time of year. I'm happy to tell you that the town clerk, the selectman's office, the chairman of the warrant committee, and I have already agreed upon an item that's, coincidentally, has been identified by the town government study committee as something we should do. And that is that when we have the body considering a recommendation, which is, you know, the recommendation typically is the recommendation of the warrant committee. Sometimes there are, thank you, sometimes there are slight changes that will come up from the floor. And oftentimes, we'll get in discussions, and we learned at this past meeting that even a single calmer, a slighter change is, is a single placement of a calmer, can, can generate significant discussion, and it also can, it can impact what people believe the meaning of the article could be, or the recommendation could be. And so the, what we collectively decide as a group, and I have to tell you, I'm embarrassed that I didn't think of it earlier. You know, it's one of those things that when it hits you, you say, of course, we should be doing that. That when we have the body deliberating on a motion, that that motion be displayed on that gigantic screen that we have in the auditorium. I mean, thankfully to the, the school, so there'll be no ambiguity. Even if, certainly we know with technology, we can also accommodate slight changes. In other words, we commit those slight changes and then have those displayed. And so we're going to do that. We're going to, we're gonna figure out a way. Now, I have to tell you, they always sound easy, and they are doable, but we'll have to figure out the minutia. For example, you know, the town clerk is completely responsible for the records that's recorded from the meeting. The warrant committee chair is responsible for the motion as representing the warrant committee before the body. And so we'll probably want to have maybe the secretary of the warrant committee controlling what's being presented. But those are things we'll work out. We'll work with the clerk, and it'll work out. So I guess I would say to everyone, or anyone that's listening now as a town meeting member, we'll do that. And I think that would have helped in a lot of areas for this particular meeting. So at that point, I'll stop and turn it over to you, Katie. I know you, you had some other items that we want to discuss.
Yeah, we want to have a discussion, and one of them I know that we'll get to is the town clerk had an issue in certain years, not every year, but in the year when the town meeting is a week before a presidential election or a state election, it really puts a huge burden on the town clerk's office and staff. Having the meeting and the election so close in proximity, now that, we'd have to change a bylaw to address something like that, but that's probably something we'd want to take into account. But I know just some of the different ideas that have come up have been relating to the timing of articles going into the warrants. The proofing of the warrant and the editing process that's done, and, you know, Tom and I served on the warrant committee, so we know that oftentimes you're running up against a deadline, and there's not always adequate time for proofing. Ted and Paul might have similar or different thoughts on that, but.
And by the way, Tom and you didn't just serve in the warrant committee. You both passed chairman of the warrant committee, as is Mr. Neely of the town government.
Got a lot of them.
Some pretty good insight into the issues and how we can make them better.
Yeah, but I remember Carol Blute always talking about the fact that, this is probably decades ago now, that there used to be, probably pre-computers, that the warrant committee, all 15 members had to come in one day, Rick probably remembers this, and split up the pages and get in little groups of two or three and proofread them. And, and you know, that was long before my time that that stopped, so I don't know how long ago that was, Rick. Maybe you remember it, but. But now it gets emailed out, and, and not everyone gets a chance to read it, and.
Well, there still is a proofing process.
There is.
Paula does.
Yeah.
That's obvious.
In addition to the warrant committee clerk.
Yes, there is. It gets proofread by Paula and by the warrant committee clerk, which, and it gets emailed out to a lot of people.
So that's spelling errors and punctuation.
You're looking usually a couple of days before the first proof has to go back.
Right.
So there's a timing issue, and then the question is if an article, and you know, and our board is probably as guilty as any of it of reopening the warrant and submitting an article late, which, like the Swift House articles, which we may wind up doing again, given how late we are at the deadline for the next warrant is coming up in January, and still research going on in that, so. But also just coordinating, Alex Whiteside is the chair of the planning board, and he can speak to this, but the, coordinating the public hearing process for the planning board articles, you always wind up running into the conflicting trap with the warrant committee trying to take them up.
Especially in the October town meeting, because, I mean, and correct me if I'm wrong, Alex, but you'd almost have to stop middle of the summer to really have enough time to, to get through the whole process without it feeling a rush to get to an October town meeting.
An article initially written and writing an article a couple of months before the deadline doesn't seem to happen very often.
No.
And then when, when you, you have an article, I mean, you have the citizens' articles that often need to be rewritten. And once you have them, the planning board puts them out for a public hearing. And one of the problems is that the public hearing doesn't usually produce very much. This last time, actually, there was on signs, there was, we had a good, a good comment at the public hearing, but we determined we couldn't, we couldn't make the change. It was to add a definition of signs, a new definition of signs. And we determined we couldn't do that. But other than that, no one else seems to have read the article, or if they had to have had any problem with the article. And so when we have the public hearing, we usually end up after the hearing in no better position than we were beforehand, because people don't seem to want to come out and, and testify and say what their views are. And in fact, once the warrant is printed, you know, it's an article submitted by the planning board. People who are reading through the warrant could call up, call me up and say, you know, I've noticed. But it, it never seems to work that way. It always seems to be on town meeting floor that the, the objections somehow rise up. And this is not a useful process. People should understand that they can read it, and if they have a question, if they have a comment, they can communicate it.
The sooner we know it, the better, easier it is to address it.
I know, I can see, I'm guilty of the same thing, that the planning board articles, zoning articles, tend to be very long, very technical sometimes. It's the last thing you want to read. I mean, you just keep putting it off and putting it off. I mean, the, the two paragraph articles, you'll read those, you'll read those beforehand, and, and, but, but, you know, and to be perfect, I'm guilty of the same thing. I, I think I read the, the sign, the residential sign by law two days before town meeting, after it was already published, and I said, oh, my God, this doesn't sound right.
You know.
Rick, Neil is gonna.
We believe that frankly, the zoning and planning board articles should not be held or heard at town meeting if they're not in the warrant with a recommendation. So if the process is not complete, the articles shouldn't be held. The citizens of the town deserve to have the opportunity to read not only the article you described, but the recommendation of the warrant committee and have a chance for people to understand what the implications are. So that, we just think that too many articles, you know, are not ready for town meeting, and they come in with no recommendation. It's unfair for the town meeting members and the residents to have to react to a handout at a town meeting. We do believe, I mean, we had a discussion in our committee after the last town meeting. We had several points. One point is that we think that, for example, electronically, if there is some changes, material changes, and they're available before the town meeting, they should be emailed through the list that our town clerk has, Susan has.
I have a decent list. Not every town meeting member is provided.
If they know the amendments, if they know the amendments are being sent out.
Right, right, which did help. This, I had some people who hadn't been on the list. But, you know, hopefully we can get the word out.
So we think those should be sent out before the meeting. Number two, we're absolutely supportive of the idea that all the warrant committee recommendations should be displayed through PowerPoint or a smart board that exists in the schools. And last but not least, absolutely every amendment that is put on the town clerk's form should be electronically displayed so that visually, everyone can see what's being discussed. So that we're trying to improve the transparency of the whole process and make it easier for town meeting members to understand what's going on. It was very difficult in the last town meeting, sitting in the audience, trying to determine as a town meeting member what was going on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, another thought that occurred to me, and I have to tell you, since email addresses were first out, it's always been a challenge for a clerk or moderator or others in town to maintain a great list, right? Susan, I have to tell you, you have probably one of the best lists right now.
Thanks.
So I, but I think what's pertinent is, we do have a list. And I, in fact, I made a comment at town meeting one of the nights that may not have gotten noticed too much. I try to remind town meeting members that, because there was an air about the town meeting, some of the comments made about the zoning articles, like they were ill-prepared or weren't thought through, or they were shoddily put together. thought through or they were shoddily put together. And you know, frankly, that is absolutely not the case. There's a tremendous amount of work by a lot of dedicated smart individuals on the planning board and other boards. And in fairness, as the chairman of the planning board has said, the public isn't rushing out to the public sessions that are being held to review those. However, you know, when you think about it, the town meeting members probably have a little bit more skin in the game than the average resident in the sense that they know that they're representing their neighbor or the community and they're going to vote on them. So, Alex, perhaps one of the other things that we could consider doing is every time we know there's a zoning article that's going to have a hearing at the planning board, that we notify the town meeting members that that hearing is going to be held and give them a copy of that. You know, maybe then they would go out and, you know, some of them, not all of them. I don't know will ever solve the, some members fear, well, look, if it just occurs to me while I'm sitting at town meeting, I'm going to get up and say it. I mean, that's the way that it is. But certainly we might, maybe we'll have some success at getting more of them that have an interest to get to those sessions that are there for them.
No, that would be fine. We can communicate it. The hearing schedule is, if it's a planning board article, we'll usually have no one appear and recommend the article to the, for passage by town meeting. And so the warrant committee could actually, without getting our recommendation on our own articles, they could probably venture an opinion on it. But...
Yes, Ted, our warrant committee chairman.
Thanks. I'm kind of wondering about two things. Could all the articles, once they are accepted into the warrant by the selectmen, be emailed to the town meeting members so they knew what was coming at them down the road so that if they had an interest in any one of them, then they could be on the lookout for the proper time and place to discuss it?
So just in clarity, you're saying once the article, not necessarily the recommendation of the warrant committee, but once the article's been identified, does she have that with town meeting?
Share that with town meeting members so that they know what's on the slate three months later.
For all the articles themselves? I mean, I suppose you could do it. I mean, it would be...
That gives you...
Especially the annual town meeting, that'll be, because you've got all the budget articles and everything else in there, that'd be...
Budget articles are standard every year, more or less.
Correct.
Okay.
So you're just talking about the...
If you have a financial article that is new, then maybe that should be sent out, but certainly any new zoning or any other, or new articles other than the standard ones.
That's a good idea. And if we could include in an email that goes out a notice as to when the planning board hearing is, or if it's another board that's holding a hearing on something, whenever the hearings might be on these that people can come to.
Maybe a board of appeals meeting.
That way the town meeting members would really feel more involved in the process from the beginning rather than just, you know...
We do also have the town meeting site on our website that, you know, we could post things.
Put it there.
And for those town meeting members that are receiving emails and aren't on my email list.
Or maybe next town meeting, just announce that to all town meeting members that henceforth those articles will be on the web.
Actually, no, it's sort of the classic issue of you make it available for those that remember to go look, or do you nudge them to say, hey, here it is? And I think we do both.
We do both. And I think the other you should do is list the source of the article so that for example, where it came from, so if the town meeting member has a question about what the intent is, have them begin to find out why the article was submitted.
Sure. The other thing I was wondering about was the schedule of closing the warrant. In the winter, we have three months between closing of the warrant and the time we have to get it to the printer. And in the fall, it's under two months, it's more, about six, seven weeks maybe if we're watching. So that becomes a constraint on everybody's schedule and I'm wondering what would happen if you closed the warrant July 4th instead of August 4th?
And the difficulty also is you have a brand-new warrant committee taking office every July.
Right.
And you get all these new members who are coming on board who, sometimes it might be an experienced member, but usually it's somebody brand-new who hasn't gone through the process before. So you're trying to get the whole new committee off the ground and explain the process to some of your new members and then suddenly you have all these articles in front of you within a couple of weeks. So maybe an earlier warrant opening and closing date would...
The only problem you have is, I mean, it's the summer months and trying to get articles in and let alone get them informed, just trying to get them in by July 1st is very, very difficult.
Well, do people perform to a deadline or do they, I mean, it's going to be, it seems to be difficult to get them in by August 4th. Is it any more difficult to get them in by July 4th?
Well, again, only in the, you know, you just came off a town meeting and now you're in the summer.
You have two months. You have two months.
Well, related to that question, Ted, I think might be, and it probably applies, Alex, to the planning board, but other boards as well. If you're, let's just use the planning board as an example, if there's a zoning article that's not a real rush or an emergency or some reason that you need to get something in, say if you're working in, the planning board's starting to look at articles now, December into January, well, maybe rather than just keeping May in mind, maybe they should be targeted more for October so that you have a longer process to go through, there's more press coverage about the articles, maybe even a couple of public hearings, a public hearing earlier in the winter and then a follow-up public hearing. Maybe you'd get more people taking part in the process, especially if the articles get emailed out. Well, I guess in that case, the article wouldn't be emailed out because it wouldn't be directed at the May meeting. But if the planning board and the other boards, even for Swift Hat or some of these other articles, if we took a long-term view of the articles and didn't just target it at whatever's coming up next, but when does it make sense to bring this before town meeting? How much research do we have to do? How much background do we have to do? And even though it's January, if the May meeting coming up, why not focus on October rather than May for some of them? That might be something that all the boards could look at. Our board probably first and foremost.
So Katie, it's interesting, we've focused the discussion on some of the sort of larger issues that, you know, we'd have to attack and maybe tweak the structure a little, the deadlines and when things are submitted, et cetera. You know, there were other issues that popped up at this particular meeting, not the only time, that it's probably a good time that we address too. So for example, there's a table in the room and documents get left on that table. And I think the average town meeting member believes that any document left on that table is official. Well, it could be, I've seen at times, somebody's revised recommendation that was going to be put before the body was left there. And if a town meeting member walked by and picked it up, they would think it was the revised recommendation of the warrant committee. And so there are some small minutia issues that actually added up. And I have to tell you, I, you know, one of the things a moderator should be always careful of doing is not reading a recommendation from the podium that isn't the recommendation of the warrant committee. And I found myself doing that because of my own error of picking up a document that I thought was the warrant committee recommendation.
That was on our easement article, which generated a lot of discussion and questions.
But regardless, I mean, that's the kind of thing that we ought to be able to solve easily. Some of these other things we may not be able to solve as easy. I don't think we'd solve them here tonight, but maybe if we could do a small working group at your direction, we could probably attack some of these and work them out so that May will be a much better experience.
Brian did suggest that, that maybe we form a little working group to get people together to try to work on solutions to some of these issues that we've identified.
I mean, my own thoughts is that, you know, it starts, every warrant starts with what the selectmen put on the warrant. So I think a representative from the board of selectmen ought to be there, perhaps the chairman, that's your choice. I'd like to see the towns study committee, they've been hashing out some of these, I mean, when I talked to Rick and found out they were coming to recommend what we had already sort of discussed about presenting that stuff, it occurred to me, they might have some others that will be really helpful. I don't think anything should be done that doesn't involve the chairman of the warrant committee, even though your plate's already pretty full, will you just be attending, share your wisdom. And I think the town clerk, I mean, it's how people have to recognize the town clerk's critical role at town meeting. And if, you know, what we've been talking about is the fall meeting, we've been talking about some zoning articles, if the planning board would like to participate, but I mean, this is, that'd be great. And maybe we can help improve things by linking in these notices to town meeting members. So...
One thing about May, you'll be pleased to know, is I don't think we're going to have any zoning articles.
Well, they, I don't know if I'm pleased, they generate such great discussions. But I think that would be, that would be a good way to attack it, so.
I think that's one.
And, you know, I just, in defense of the planning board, I guess I, the selectmen articles generated some problems at town meeting. It wasn't all zoning articles, and one of them was actually written by the planning board at our request, which was the signs in the business district.
Right.
And that's the one that generated the calmer discussion, but the animal shelter...
The comma was an amendment. The comma wasn't in the original, the original document. Someone put the comma in in amendment and that's where the...
So we don't want to get bogged down in the specifics of articles, but it's not, you know, I just don't want us to give the impression this is all the planning board, this is the selectmen's articles and any articles. It's a way, how do we improve the process for all the town meeting members going forward?
I learned, by the way, that we had a high school English grammar professional at that meeting that we didn't take advantage of during that discussion. I learned afterwards, but anyway.
So, Rick, did your committee have any other suggestions or the warrant committee?
Just the use of more electronic means and earlier sharing of information and transparency so again, that the whole group can see what's going on.
That's good. I think part of the problem we have too is, and, you know, maybe it's just an anomaly, but right now, especially with the board of selectmen, things are just so dynamic. I mean, things are changing so quickly with certain, you know, that there's a lot of times when we're in a rush to get an article, you know, because it's forming as you're trying to, you know, I mean, the discussions are still taking place. I mean, you know, Henry's would be a good example of that and, you know, the...
Swift Hat House is another good example.
Yeah, yeah, that just is, it's just ongoing and you don't even know where you're going with it right now because it's not far enough there yet, but you don't want to miss the opportunity of getting the article in either.
And Rick can probably understand that as a former member of this board and it's difficult because putting on your warrant committee hat, you know how frustrating it can be for that committee to have the warrants opening and closing and there's a new article coming in three weeks before you go into print.
Yep.
It really upsets the whole warrant committee schedule, but at the same time, things are happening in real time and, you know, we've got interested residents and commercial interests and others that might require the warrant to be reopened and closed, even though we don't want to do it, but it's a balancing act.
I was chuckling at your comment that Rick, having been a former member of this board, in his role as the head of the town government, he's chaired about every board in town, he's chaired the school committee, he's chaired the warrant committee, he's chaired the board of selectmen.
I know.
Well, you get around.
Yeah, the school committee, don't forget that.
Some of these things, by the way, you just may need to just cut it off and say, hey, you know, we're not going to rush this through and if it's not ready, it's not going. Because you're better off sitting back saying, let's get it right and let's not be subject to a legal action afterwards and let's make sure that, you know, there's another town meeting six months away or five months away and let's get it right and if necessary, if it's not ready, it doesn't go.
Yeah, that's the ideal, but unfortunately there are, there's an occasional case where you do have to rush something in. But ideally, that would be the majority of it, I agree.
So now, chairman, you could decide if you would like to take responsibility, if you'd like me to take responsibility, getting that group together, either would be fine with me.
We should probably target early January for this, just to get started early.
Okay.
But I don't think it's going to take a long time to do it, so. You're the moderator, town meeting is within your realm, do you want to get it organized?
I'd be happy to do that, absolutely. Okay.
So your closing date is now January 1st, did I read?
No. All for the warrant.
The warrant closing is January 5th, Monday.
It was reported as the 1st.
Yeah.
1st tonight, so...
I think I might have said that at a meeting, I was kind of speaking generally the first week in January, but I think I did say January 1st, but obviously that's a holiday, so that's not a...
We have a meeting Monday night, the 5th, which will wrap up our articles. So that's why I'm trying to confirm what the date is, the 1st, the 5th or the 6th.
Would you prefer the 6th? This is your opportunity to...
We prefer it to be the 6th so we can finish on the 5th.
The 1st Monday in January is the 5th.
Right, and the closing is Monday night?
Yes, by 5. Do we...
And the government study committee is planning on submitting...
We have a meeting this Monday night.
So would you like us, would you like us to push that date out?
Just to the 6th, just to want, I have to care if it's new time on the 6th.
I don't have a problem with that one.
Yeah, I don't either, right?
Okay.
Thank you.
So January 6th, okay.
That's great. When we have a meeting on Wednesday, we'll see what we're up against.
Yeah.
Okay.
So anyone, any other comments or closing thoughts? We'll see what the working group comes up with.
All right.
It's a plan.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Good to hear, Rick.
Thank you, Rick. Ted, Brian, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Do you want to move up the manager for 88 Wharf so he can, yes, Mr. Sullivan?
I got a question on 88 Wharf. The previous manager that they...
The 12 and 13?
Yes.
Yeah.
88 Wharf.
We go to 13?
Yes, 12 and 13.
Did Liz John Collins is the previous manager, but I thought it was Eric. Somebody wrote on his previous...
He was never approved.
Okay, the town administrator mentioned we have a representative from 88 Wharf here, so we're going to take 88 Wharf out of order and invite you to come up.
Matthew Sullivan.
Mr. Sullivan, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
We have two items for 88 Wharf. We have a common victor's license and a change of manager. So why don't we cover both of them while you're here? Welcome, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in tonight. The common victor's license, why don't we act on that one first?
You haven't written anything in a while, Dennis.
Haven't I? So that's number 12. I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of common victor's license for 88 Wharf 2015.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, now we're on to the change of manager. And are you the new manager for the restaurant?
I am. But you're also one of the owners.
I am. This is the first time my schedule has been free to be day-to-day manager, so for the past, since early October, I've been there five nights a week and I can plan on being so for the foreseeable future. I've had lots of experience, ran city places or suburb places, so I think I'm a good fit and, you know, hopefully be responsible in terms of food service and alcohol service and...
Have you been involved in the ownership since the restaurant opened?
Yeah.
So any changes in store? I know the...
I think we're just trying to make it more consistent and better.
Well, I was there last week and it was great.
Yeah.
The food was great.
I've lowered the price points a bit, a little more gastropub, some places you can go a couple of times a month, maybe zigging from the other local establishments, you know, where they're a little more occasion dining. I'm really happy with our chef team, I think they're very good. So I'm glad you liked it. I think it's pretty consistent. Now it's hopefully do the same thing day-to-day, get the word out.
I'll move to approve.
The only other question I had, and I think I'd half gotten answered, but as I'm looking at the petition for a change of license, it missed Liz John Collins as the previous manager and I thought it was Eric.
His, we put him in front of the local level and that was approved.
Yep.
There was not approved at the ABCC level.
Okay.
And then I moved on from that employee when that came back to us early fall.
Okay. That explains that. Okay.
Do we have any other questions for Mr. Sullivan? And we do appreciate your coming in tonight. We have these change of manager requests, that's something we've been trying to get now, is to have the people come in so that we can ask questions and get a chance to
Sure.
Get a chance to meet you, and you can save your words, so, so thank you for being here.
Could you have one question?
Questions? Yes.
Is the alcohol license on the same?
It's on this evening as well.
It is.
Okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure that.
It's part of a group license, or group of licenses.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's on there, though.
Uh, let's see, so where is that?
Number 13.
13.
13. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve a change of manager for 88 Wharf Restaurant from John Collins to Matthew Sullivan, and forward the pertinent paperwork to the ABCC for its approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll get to the liquor licenses a little bit later tonight.
I'll take it a try at the restaurant.
But you, unless you want to stay, you don't need to be here for that, is a, there's a long list of them.
All right. Thanks, Mike.
Okay.
Thank you. Oh, yes, I forgot Michael was here. Okay, we're now back to our agenda. We're gonna skip over number 7 and go on to number 8, and our assistant town administrator, Michael Blanchard, is going to join us. This is an unbilled sewer charges appeal. Michael, do you want to lead the discussion on this?
Sure, absolutely. As you know, you adopted a policy regarding previously unknown sewer connections and non-billed sewer counts. As part of that policy, anyone that was billed as part of those newly discovered connections had the option to appeal. I think it was approximately 22 bills went out in the initial mailing, and this was the only appeal that we received as part of that mailing. And at this point, it would be the only, because the timelines have expired to file an appeal. Ms. Moore filed an appeal for 329 Canton Avenue. Her parents were the owners of the home, who unfortunately have recently passed within this calendar year, so she filed it on behalf of their estate. Under the policy, I as the hearing officer, I heard her appeal, and I think you were providing copies of the documents, I also recorded the hearing as required by the policy. And as a result of that, I denied her appeal at that stage. Again, under the policy, she has the option to appeal my decision, and that's what brings it before you say she did do that. Now, as the board, you have the option to make a decision to either hear her appeal or to deny her request.
The basis, are you going to deny, Michael, was?
Uh, it was twofold. One, to summarize my opinion of, of her case was, one, she didn't think the policy was fair. She didn't think it was fair that her parents, as far as she understood, did everything they were supposed to do to connect properly, and it was a town problem in this particular case, as her belief that the property was never billed, so she didn't think it was fair that they had to pay any sort of back charges.
Yeah.
My explanation to her was, it certainly was a fair concern, but I think that was the argument made before you implemented the policy. I think your policy could.
We did discuss, we did discuss that, yes.
Right, right. The second issue she brought up is, she recollects a conversation with Joe Lynch, the DPW director, in which she feels that Joe told her, Mr. Lynch told her, that the town would not be going back and collecting any unbilled sewer charges from the past, that they would only be billing going forward.
Was that correct?
Uh, well, no, after speaking with Lynch, he absolutely denies having that conversation. In fact, as you know, he was integral in, in developing this policy for some time, and, you know, Mr. Lynch said, as far as he understood, that was never on the table, so it would be never a conversation that he would have with anyone. So, one, talking with him, and number two, you know, even if a town employee had said, oh, yeah, I did mention something to that effect, it's certainly not binding. But in this case, he, he does not recollect and denies having that conversation with her.
So, we have your materials, we have her letter, we have the full record that was before you, Michael, submitted to us, we have the tape of the hearing that you had with this applicant in person, and I think the question for the board tonight is, do we want to act on this with or without a hearing? Do we want to schedule a public hearing, give this applicant, that's probably not the right term for her, but Ms. Moore, give her an opportunity to come in and talk with the board, or do we feel that we have enough in the written materials that we can go ahead and act on it without scheduling a hearing and bringing her in to discuss? And, and Michael, have you had any conversations with her about that?
I have. I did speak with her, this actually did not come up during our hearing in terms of it would be at a public meeting and televised, and she does understand that, and still, you know, wants to be considered for a hearing.
So, she wants to come in?
I guess I'm a little confused. I thought that's what this was going to be, but I guess apparently that's not the case, that this is not an appeals hearing.
This is not with Tom?
No, she's, she's not here tonight.
Well, obviously, she's not here, yes.
No, you have to decide as a board whether or not you're gonna uphold your assistant town administrator's determination, or, and if, and if you do, then there's, there'll be no hearing for Ms. Moore, or if you aren't gonna uphold your assistant town administrator's determination, then you are going to then hold a hearing with Ms. Moore. So, it's twofold. You have to first decide whether or not you're going to uphold your assistant town administrator's determination.
And if we don't, that's the end of it?
And if, and if you uphold his determination, it's the end of it. If you decide to hold a public hearing, then that's held at a future selectmen's meeting.
But, but just to be clear, I, we could have a public hearing and take into account her presentation, and we might still reach the same result as the assistant town administrator. We might not, we might, but, so we might still wind up upholding.
That's right.
Just to clarify that, that even if we have a hearing, you know, we might still ultimately reach the same decision. The question before us right now is, do we want to have a hearing? I think this is because the policy was written, there's not a copy of it available to us. You might have a copy of it handy, Michael, but.
I do.
Way the policy was written, we would have, the board could act on this without a hearing or with a hearing, or maybe, I don't recall the specific discussion around that, why we, why it was written that way, or why we handled it that way, but it's really a question for the board, do we want to have a public hearing, and what's our sentiment on this? Has she specifically requested a hearing to come into the board?
Yes, that was her letter that was sent, she was requesting to move forward that next step in the appeal process.
Um, I mean, I guess I, it, with respect to what I've seen so far, there, there's nothing in the written material that would lead me to believe that the assistant town administrator's decision wasn't correct. I, you know, if, if the rest of the board would like to have a hearing, I have no problem with it. But, but it, it seems based upon, and again, Ms. Moore is not here to testify, so, you know, it's, it's whether she has anything else to add, but, but certainly what I, what I've written, that it's not contested that the property was connected to town sewerage. We took into consideration when we adopted the policy that there could be people that it, we weren't gonna make a determination on, you know, was it an illegal connection, or was it just a, you know, there could have been several reasons that this thing wasn't billed, you know, or reasons that we didn't know about it, including administrative errors, and, and we just had no way to determine it, so that we kind of bent over backwards to, you know, give this amnesty and, and allow people to pay it over a rather long period of time.
We did, although I think this house is on, is being sold, is that correct?
Yeah.
Correct, it may have already been sold, actually.
It did?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so the lease been paid?
Fees are due.
Correct, yeah, so it has, it has been, would have been paid as part of the final metering.
Right.
But she's still, you know, if, if her appeal were to be, you know.
Then you would already fund it.
We would refund that money, correct.
But it, but it has been paid, as town records indicate?
I, to be quite honest, I haven't seen that record. The conversation we had with the water and sewer department is that, in order to do a final metering, it would have to be paid.
Okay.
So, I will make that assumption and say, yes, I do believe.
My understanding is that the money is in an escrow account, waiting for a determination of this board.
Okay.
In my opinion, I would say, you know, since she's gone to the trouble of asking for a hearing, we should, we should offer it to her.
Yeah, I'm, I'm inclined to, to that also, especially if someone is.
Somebody has the right to appeal and has the right to be heard.
Has asked to commit for a hearing.
I'm fine.
The written record would seem to indicate that there's, you know, that the town administrator, assistant town administrator's decision was in line with the way the policy was written, but, but I would like to give her an opportunity to come in and make any other arguments or points to us that she would like to raise.
Because if the other 22 people come in front of, you know, if they decide to appeal, we should, we should be able to hear them as well. My question is, what has to happen for you to make a decision in your office that, you know, waives the, the fees? What's going to, like, what, what would you have to hear?
Sure, so, and the only thing I really have to base my decision on is the policy, and it's not limited to, but includes if there's any sort of dispute of facts regarding they actually have a connection, regarding the calculations for the charges, if there's any sort of hardship, a grievance about the process. And again, you know, in my opinion, at this time, she didn't present anything that would fall into that category, in my opinion.
Was she one of the, the people that volunteered, that came forward and said, yes, I'm, I'm on public sewer?
No, she was identified by the town.
Sure.
Yes.
It, it seems that probably in hindsight, what we probably should have done was had an automatic hearing before the board, unless the person opted out and wanted us to just decide it on the merits, and they didn't want to come into a televised meeting. Maybe that's how it should have been written, I don't recall a year ago why it, why that approach wasn't taken versus, and this one was, but I, I'd be inclined to allow this, she's not a resident, but a representative of the, the estate, to come in and, and talk with us, make any arguments that she would like, and bring any new evidence that she might have.
I'm fine with it, yeah, I go along with that.
So, could we try to get her in for the 18th?
Uh, yes, I made her aware that was a possible meeting date, and she advised she would make herself available for the 18th.
Okay, and if not, we can schedule for one of the early January meetings. Okay.
Right.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting around tonight.
Of course.
So, let's go back to number 7, which is what we skipped over and related to our earlier discussion about town meeting. We had a, an agenda item for 20,000, 2015 annual town meeting warrant articles. If there's anything we want to discuss tonight, we could also take this up next week, and that might be, we might have some more information pinned down on some things to be in a better position next week to make this decision, but the deadline's coming up, obviously. It's now January 6th.
Right.
So, we've talked about some in the past that we want to submit. The appropriation for the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yeah.
Possibly the Swift Hat articles.
Possibly, and the town administrator article.
Yes.
Are we gonna vote on these to put them on the, the warrant?
Eventually.
We will?
Yes, we don't have any in draft yet, or at least I haven't seen any in draft.
No, we don't.
Well, the Swift Hat ones, we have the drafts from last summer.
You'll have them on your next meeting after the submission deadline of January 6th.
Yeah.
I'm hearing about this, you know, the appropriation for the affordable housing. I don't know, nobody's ever said anything to me about it, so.
Well, I've talked about it, but we actually, when we were doing our housing production plan back in, I think it was September, we, we voted to submit an article, excuse me, we voted to submit an article for the May town meeting seeking appropriation for one-time monies, free cash, basically. So, we've already voted to submit the article, we don't, we haven't, we haven't designated a dollar amount. I mean, I, I'd recommend that we seek a substantial amount, such as $500,000, to put in as the request to the warrant committee, to get our Affordable Housing Trust.
Off the ground.
Really off to a, a real running start, and give them some tools to make some real progress in the area of affordable housing. But, but that's something we'd have to vote, and.
Right.
So, we voted to, I think what our vote was in September was to have, was to charge town council with drafting an article for us, and we'll have to see the specific language.
Yeah, exactly, what the money's gonna be used for, how it's gonna be spent, you know.
Actually, you all know, the trust decides how to spend it.
Right, where we're gonna take it from, who's.
Free cash.
We'll take it from free cash? Okay.
That would be the recommendation, I think.
Yes, that's what we would ask the warrant committee to appropriate, but obviously, it has to go through the warrant committee process.
Yeah.
But it would be one thing we would identify as one-time money, that we would like to see as a funding source for an article for the housing trust to really, to, and the planning board and our board have really focused on affordable housing. We've got our housing plan in, we're, we're trying to make some headway, and it's a challenge, because we don't have the CPA, the Community Preservation Act. We don't have other funding readily available to us, so we have the trustees in place. It would be nice to give them some resources to make some real inroads.
Yeah, exactly.
And 500,000 might not be what ultimately is recommended by the warrant committee, but I think if we start with a large number, that's, that's the appropriate approach, at least for the board. That would be my recommendation for this board to vote.
Well, we can, we can discuss it, I think, yeah.
And we can discuss it when we submit an article. Are there other items that we want to submit articles for? I guess we could take the long view that we might not be talking, May, we might be talking October, but anything else that anyone, or that the town administrator has on her list?
I'm actually hearing that there's a zoning article maybe going in. I'll know next week.
A zoning, well, Alex indicated none, but then he indicated maybe one.
He, he said there's none presently, but I said there may be one, and he said, okay.
A citizens' article?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, is there anything, though, that this board wants to submit?
Something I can think of.
Okay, then we can, I think we should put this on our agenda again for the next meeting, and have, if not the articles, at least the topics that we want town council to finish up before the deadline. Okay, so then, why don't we move on to number 9, which is the 2015 liquor license renewals? We have a lengthy motion.
Okay, I'll move to, and I do have a comment afterward, but I'll move to approve the following 2015 liquor license renewals contingent upon the receipt of all necessary certificates required by Chapter 304 Acts of 2004, signed by the Building Inspector and the Fire Department. Milton, American Legion Post, number 114, 123 Granite Ave., Wallston Golf Club, 999 Randolph Avenue, NPP Inc., DBA Central Liquor Mart, 26 Central Avenue, Delaney Liquors, DBA East Milton Wine and Spirits, 368 Granite Avenue, Esprit de Van, 25 Central Avenue, Fruit Center Inc., 110 Antwerp Street, Milton Hoosier Club, 193 Central Avenue, Wall Street Restaurant Group LLC, DBA 88 Wharf, 88 Wall Street, Milton, Fuller Housing Corporation, DBA Fuller Village, 1372 Brush Hill Road, Milton Fuller Housing Corporation, DBA Fuller Village, 1399 Blue Hill Avenue, Welsh Restaurant Management LLC, DBA Abbey Park, 550 Adams Street, B&amp;D Ichiro Inc., DBA Ichiro Sushi, 538 A Adams Street, Milton Opus LLC, DBA Steel and Rye, 95 Elliott Street, and to approve annual Sunday opening permits for Central Liquor Mart, East Milton Wine and Spirits, and the Fruit Center, to grant permission for Esprit de Van to sell alcoholic beverages on Sunday between Thanksgiving and New Year's.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion, Tom? You said you had a comment?
Yeah, my only comment is, as I've said in the past, it, it's getting very difficult to approve these licenses, because I know some of these licenses, we have things within them such as a ratio of food sales to beverage sales that nobody is checking, and we're really renewing licenses that we haven't fully vetted out, and that concerns me. I will vote to do it this time, but I don't want to see it happen again.
I think that's a resources...
It is a resource. I understand it's a resource.
But obviously...
But it's still, you're putting us in a position of approving a license that we don't know if the person has actually complied with the requirements of the license.
Right. So, can I suggest, under the reorganization plan, I think the Town Administrator's plan will have some ability to address some of this issue?
Mm-hmm. That's fine.
And maybe we can continue that discussion in terms of the roles and the realignment of the office a little bit, but I agree. Any other...
So, Tom, you want to make sure that the food sales are higher than liquor sales? I think that's what the agreement was, right?
It depends on, some of the liquor licenses have, every liquor license is slightly different. There, I don't think there's one that's exactly the same. So, somebody's got to go, and there are a number of them that limit the amount of drinks without food. There's a number of them that limit, you know, that have a ratio of alcoholic beverage to sales, to food sales within them that just nobody's checking.
Right. But we only have a few. I mean, you can't do that, obviously, with liquor stores.
No, liquor stores don't have those, but it's just going to be the...
It's three or four or five restaurants.
It's probably the bigger liquor, well, actually, probably all those liquor licenses have something in it. The Abbey Park definitely does. 88, I'm not sure about 88 Wharf because it wasn't around with that, but I know Steel &amp; Rye has...
Lot of food. Wallison Golf Club has a lot of food.
Right.
Yeah, but at the last meeting, Mrs. Fagan or Mrs. Rizzi mentioned that when the common vic licenses come up, a different license, obviously, but there's coordination with the Board of Health and with the Treasurer's Office and others to make sure that there's no Board of Health open issues or fees are being paid. So, some of those...
We do have that policy procedure with this. We have the Building Inspector.
It's just those special provisions we put in.
It's the special provisions, but we don't get any balance sheets from these organizations, or we don't have, excuse me, personnel that goes out at night and sits to make sure that the ratio...
I don't even know who would check that. I mean, I've had a...
You would have to have, you know, a sitting operation or a spotter or somebody go to these restaurants and check it.
But the ratio of sales, that's...
You would have to ask for documentation from the restaurant for that. But we will follow up on it. That is on our reorg list for the new position.
Well, I mean, liquor licenses are approved. Most recent three big restaurants, they were all approved with conditions, and they all get copies of those conditions annually.
Mm-hmm.
So, it should be as simple as you just asking for the information.
Yeah, in a lot of cases, yes.
But again, we have an open position on our office and run to staff again, and we have been for a while, so...
And I think all the recent ones are, require, require the liquor liability insurance.
Absolutely.
It would be, nobody else is checking it, so it would be incumbent upon us to make sure that they do have their...
That's part of the criteria annually now, that when we, before we can bring the liquor licenses to you for approval, we have to have that paperwork.
Yes, because it's state law now.
Yeah.
But with a liquor board, so...
We have to have a certificate of liquor, of their liquor line insurance.
Right.
Okay. So, this is an area for us to target for additional follow-up or something that we're going to be looking at, trying to expand some of our practice in this area.
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion on this particular motion?
Nope.
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We now have entertainment licenses. Number 10.
I'll move to approve the following 2015 entertainment license renewals. Abbey Park, 550 Adams Street, 88 Wharf, 88 Wharf Street, and Steel &amp; Rye, 95 Elliott Street.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Next item is an extension of New Year's Eve serving hours.
I'll move to approve a request from Abbey Park, Steel &amp; Rye, 88 Wharf to extend their hours to serve alcohol on New Year's Eve to include a toast at midnight.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we've covered 11, 12, and 13. Now, we are on to budgets.
Do we have numbers for these?
Budget amounts, yes.
Budget amounts, yeah.
In the motions. We do.
They're not in the motions?
No, the selectmen's. Two of them don't, two of them do. Why don't we start with, the Town Accountant was here.
She just stepped in.
Why don't we start with the Historical Commission one, since that's an easy one, and we'll wait...
I'll move to approve and forward to the warrant committee the FY '16 Historical Commission in the amount of $2,240.
Uh, second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to cover group insurance next?
Why don't we do selectmen next?
Selectmen, okay.
Move to approve and forward to the warrant committee the FY '16 Selectmen's Budget in the amount of...
Level service is $520,285. Level dollar is $520,285.
So, it's the same for both?
It's the same for both.
Second.
Yes, and that is a result of the reorganization that the chairman spoke about a little earlier that takes place in four different departments, which I will speak to later, but one of those departments is the Selectmen's Department. So, by realigning some positions, we will result in a savings of approximately $3,500.
So, that's, motion's been made. Second?
Uh, yeah, I did second it.
Okay. Discussion then on the Selectmen's Budget.
The only thing, again, and they're not big dollars, but, you know, we're putting in, we're putting in a below level dollar budget, and I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that when we're budgeting, you know, if we're going to be putting in something that significantly reduces the budget below level service, we should be able to have a plan on how we can accomplish that. If it's not, if you can't accomplish it, then it shouldn't be there. So, you know, I'm looking at, you know, for example, you know, utility office supplies going from an actual $4,000 in 2014 to less than $1,000. How are we going to do that? I mean, if you can't do it, then it shouldn't be there. You know, it should be, there has to be a plan on how we're going to accomplish that, or we got to look someplace else to reduce the budget for that 2%. And it's not just this budget.
I agree with you, but I think you have to, you know, each department has to make a conscious decision of what they feel that, for their department, what, where the cut they have to make.
But for me, then I want to know how you're going to do it.
How I'm going to do it is, you know, I'm not going to buy business cards in this next fiscal year.
That's 200 bucks.
I'm not, I'm not going to buy as many toners, you know...
What happens when we run out of toner?
Well, we're going to have to print to the printer across the hall. To me, I would rather scrimp and save on my pens and pencils and my notepads than to reduce a position, hours of a position in the Selectmen's Office when I believe we're still understaffed.
Right, but the point I'm trying to make is, there is some point when, you know, something that is like office supplies, where literally the office will close down because it just aren't anymore.
Mm-hmm.
And if we haven't thought about that, then I don't think it's a realistic budget. You know, that, you know, on the other hand, you know, we have, you know, in here, the, within that all other, that $10,000 is the, you know, a lot of that is MMA stuff.
The MMA annual conference.
And that is something, even though I would hate to see it happen, that is a controllable expense. We can say, "We're just not going MMA next year."
Right.
And that's, that's a controllable expense.
Yep.
It would hurt, but the department's not going to close down because of it.
Right.
But to say, "I'm not going to buy office supplies," just isn't realistic.
Yeah, although these are all under the expense line, right? So, we can move money in between the lines.
We can move money in between.
You can, yes. You can. But just let's be realistic when we do these things. That's, and...
But again, when you have, when you have departments that have very limited general expense lines and you have to make a cut somewhere, that's the...
Maybe you come to, and...
You know, but you, the issue is you need to go to the warrant committee, and then you need to make the argument at the warrant committee. You know, I did the exercise that you want me to do of a 2% cut, but realistically, I'll have no office supplies, so don't ask me to print more budgets for you.
Well, if, if it were me, I would make the cut. I can't do it. It's not doable. I'm not going to comply with it. It is not doable.
But my warrant committee chair has asked for the exercise, so I'm just doing the exercise.
If it's not doable, it's not doable.
So, are you, so are you looking at the minus 2% column?
Yes.
Yes.
Not the level service or level dollar?
I mean, I'm concerned about, I'm concerned about the, all, both the level service and the level dollar, because we spent $4,000 in 2014, and now we're budgeting under $2,000, you know, for the, and, you know, maybe 2014's an anomaly. I don't know. You know, maybe there was something in there that spiked. It could be, because we don't have any other actual dollar information other than that one year in here. But those are the things I'm concerned about. I'm concerned about realistic budgets, that's all.
Yeah, but I think the minus 2% is, you know, that's just an arbitrary number to begin with, so...
And I don't like that, but, I mean, I understand the minus 2%, but if we can't attain it, I mean, if there's no way that we can, we can make this office run with $900 of office supplies, then we shouldn't be proposing it.
But we're not, I don't think the Town Administrator's proposing this. I think she's just responding to a request from the warrant committee.
But this, exactly. It's just a question from the warrant committee.
But again, what good are we doing the warrant committee if we put a budget, "Oh, great, that's the way it's going to be"? Well, no, it's not. It can't be.
I think the warrant committee's sophisticated enough to know that 2% is an arbitrary number and that that's going to pose a big challenge on departments, so I don't think we should worry too much about it.
But I think what the warrant committee wanted to know is how you're going to get there. How are you going to get there?
We've got our warrant committee chairman in the audience.
And if it's just 2% for the exercise, then I think it's stupid.
Ted, would you like to, since you're here, would you like to join us and...
Well, thank you. I just wanted to say a quick couple of things. I agree with Tom that budgets should be realistic, and I know we're going to have a problem with this particular aspect, you know, from many budgets. We reviewed a few the other day that have exactly that issue. Office supplies are being cut to an unreasonable level because nobody wants to touch labor.
Right. And that's not doing anybody any good.
Right. But I do want to accentuate right now that 2% is not an arbitrary number. It is the number that most of these budgets will have to suffer in order to meet a balanced budget against the available revenues we have.
Okay. We were, we had talked in our previous meetings, we thought it was an arbitrary number, so we didn't realize it was based on that.
No, it is based on what we will need to cut in order to reach, reach balance with the available revenue as we see it.
All right. Well, thank you for clarifying.
Okay. So...
Okay.
Yeah, so again, my point is, we just shouldn't be, if you're not willing to live with it, we shouldn't be proposing it, because it may become reality.
Yeah, I guess, again, though, it's in the general expense line, and there's other expenses that we can move around afterwards, so...
There are. There are, but I still, again, want to know how we're going to get there.
Well, if it's a 2% cut, it's going to be pretty difficult all around, because it'll, it'll impact other departments as well. So, what do we, what's the sense of the board? Do we want to go ahead and approve this for tonight?
I'll approve it, but again, like I say, it just, it bothers me that I don't think we're being realistic in that. We're not really thinking it through. It's, and that bothers me. And it's not just this budget. It's all the ones I've looked at. They just...
Right, because in terms of thinking through, it's the level service and the level dollar that we're really trying to have department heads put some real thought into, plan ahead what they, what can they live with if it's level service, and what would they seek to maintain level, level dollar versus, and maintain the level service. But the 2% is, you know, that's going to, if that impacts all departments, then they're going to have to make difficult cuts, and...
Right, but if those cuts are...
Take it out of one line or another line, it's not going to be realistic.
If those cuts realistically have to be personnel cuts, then they realistically should be personnel cuts.
But see, I respectfully disagree with you, Tom, because I'd rather have the personnel to run the department to carry out the duties of this office and buy my own pens and paper and notebooks than reduce the staff. I'm sorry.
If you want to say that, no, that's, that's fine. Then that is...
Or I'll go to less meetings during the year, or we give up the MMA conference.
That's fine. Tell me how you're going to get there, that's all.
Yeah, I'm going to get there by maybe having to put some of my own money out to buy books, but I'd rather do that than lose hours of position.
That's a plan. That's a plan, but nobody's telling me that. Nobody's telling me that.
I'm telling you that now.
That's the problem.
If I run out of pens, I'll buy my own, but I need, I need, we're talking about liquor licenses and making sure that we're compliant. We need to have the people in the office to do the work.
I totally understand. I totally understand that. I totally understand that.
So, I, listen, I think this is going to get completely vetted at the warrant committee, and they'll be asking all these questions, and the department heads, including the Town Administrator, will be in to answer these questions.
To advocate for us.
One of the things, again, and I was on it, I've been on it for the past at least two years, that the town has to get control of its own house and its own budgeting, and we're not. We just leave it to the warrant committee and then, and see what happens.
Well...
And that's not right.
Well, the town management, including the school management, has put, is working on a five-year forecast. They've put forward the financial plan. The school committee has delayed this a little bit because the school committee wants to vet the numbers. So, I think management has done what's been asked, but we're going to have that discussion at a January meeting rather than a November, a December meeting.
Yeah, well, I mean, the forecast is different than the budget. You know, the budgeting is...
But we do...
The budgeting is a spending plan. The forecast is a planning tool as opposed to a spending plan. This is how we're going to spend our money next year, and some thoughts and some cohesive thought amongst all the departments should go into that for, you know, it's not the, it's not the central business office budget. It's not, it's the town's budget.
Exactly. In your department, in your departments and your department heads, we are all going to go together, and we're going to go as one unified force to the warrant committee and to...
And that's fine.
...argue our budgets. We do have that plan.
But that's the only point I'm trying to make. I mean, I'll...
I'm understood. These will be tough choices if we have to live with minus 2%. So, any other discussion on the selectmen's budget?
We done with pens and pencils now?
Then, if not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's, we want to, want to do group insurance next?
Yes.
Oh, Amy is back.
I'm Town Accountant.
All right, why don't we go, or Amy, will Amy cover both? Amy, do you want to come and join us?
Yes, she's going to cover group insurance as well.
Group insurance and central business.
It's a joint budget.
Okay.
Thank you. That's the same.
Good evening, Amy.
Hi.
Thank you for waiting around.
It's okay.
So, we'll start with group insurance?
Yes.
Okay. We have a request for $10,884,759 for group insurance.
Yes, and this, this is a contractual budget, so you will see no level dollar budget. You will see a level service budget. The reason for the increase is we have 29 new additions to the plan, and we have four months of actuels for fiscal year 15, so it's, this budget's always a tough budget for the Town Accountant and himself to craft, because we only have four months of data for the year. And this year, these four months that we've had a slight increase in claims, so in talking with Cook &amp; Company, our consultants, they felt comfortable with us putting in a 4% increase for fiscal year 15. So, this results in about $700,000.
So, that 4%, that 4% is calculated based upon last year's, the FY '15 budget?
It's based upon the new census numbers.
Okay, so, yeah, so it's really, we can't really compute it looking at...
No.
...these numbers.
No.
Okay. So, then the, then the other increase, the projected increase, premium increase is 4%, and then the increase in the enrollees?
Enrollees is 29.
Just because you're, that's $318,000?
Yes.
Okay.
We had two new employees in the fire, three new employees in the police, two new employees in DPW, and 29 new enrollees in the schools.
And then we've had some stress and strain on our...
I mean, I'm sorry, excuse me, 21 new enrollees in the schools.
And we've had some stress and strain this year on people accessing the, because we're self-insured, so...
Yes.
So, the trust fund has been hit a little bit hotter this year than past years.
The claims seem to be trending higher this year than in previous years, so that's the 4% increase at this time.
So, it's not per se a premium. It's just really getting the trust fund back to a point where, I mean, there's some premium aspect of it. There probably is some...
Right, but we want to maintain that level that, in the trust.
Right.
Approximately 2%.
I understand. The only other comment I had on this, and it's probably a very small number, but the Medicare, that Medicare is the employees, the 1.45%?
Yes.
Okay, and for it to be the same in '15 and '16 in terms of budget, unless there's some room in that '15 budget, because salaries go up and the Medicare is unlimited. It's, so if your salaries increase, then the Medicare's going to go up by 1.45% of whatever the salary increases are. Other than on the exempt people, there are some people, pre-'86 people, that aren't covered by Medicare, but everybody else is, so if they get a 5% pay increase, then, you know, the 1.45% is obviously going to increase for the Medicare. I don't think it's a big number. It probably isn't. Probably not here.
I think what we did was, we did a five-year assumption to put that.
Well, I did. The fiscal year 14, the actual was 693. I took the five months that I have for '15 so far, and it's still trending about the same.
Mm-hmm.
So, we felt that the 725 was a reasonable estimate.
Okay.
Because, again, it is a fluid number, because we don't, you know, so that's why we're just carrying the previous year's number forward. And this is a budget that we, because it is done so early in the fiscal year, we do take another look at this and our claims history around February, and then hopefully we are able to have good news and reduce it a little bit, but at this point, we are going to hold a 4%.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll move if you're satisfied.
Yeah, fine. Where are we? Do you have numbers on this thing?
Do you have any numbers on this one?
Okay. All right, I got it. Yeah.
Yeah, 10 million.
I'll move to approve and forward to the warrant committee the FY '16 group insurance budget in the amount of $10,884,759.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Central Business Office, Amy.
Yes.
Your budget. Would you like to say a few words about it?
Sure. As I believe is on your agenda for tonight, there has been a reorganization plan that was recently approved by the Personnel Board, and it will be for this board later on tonight. I reflected those changes and how they will affect the Central Business Office budget. I tried to, in my narrative, show the movement of money, because the reorg includes a transfer of one employee from Central Business to report to DPW, her main function being water and sewer-related activities, payment processing, things like that, so that just made sense, as well as some of the parking ticket duties and some other things from my office will be moving down into the Treasurer's Office, so I'm transferring the expense that's normally budgeted for that in my department down to the Treasurer Collector's budget, so you'll see his level dollar go up by that amount.
I noticed in the reorg that unemployment was going to move from, is that the administering of the unemployment?
Yeah, so what happens right now is we get weekly, daily emails from unemployment, and they ask for information such as quarterly wages, reasons for separation. It never made sense to me that it was with the Assistant Town Accountant, because we are not the holder of the payroll records, and we don't have payroll as a responsibility, so that never made sense. So, part of this reorg was, a goal was to try to get duties to where they belong, you know, like what makes sense, so that did. That's not a lot of her time, but it just makes sense that it's being dealt there.
The only question I have, we have an unemployment consultant. I don't know, do we pay him any money, or that just comes out of the claim?
Yeah, we pay a quarterly fee that's, I think it's up to like 885 a quarter, something like that.
Is that in your budget? Is that in your budget?
No, it's in the unemployment budget.
Okay, fine. That was my question.
Yep.
Okay.
So as part of this reorg, there's a senior admin clerk that's currently vacant in my office that has been eliminated, and we have created a financial analyst position. That position in response to the Department of Revenue recommendations of hiring an Assistant Town Administrator for Finance to handle some of the budgeting, forecasting, analysis work. We recognize that that would come at a six-figure salary, that the town can't afford that, that I could assume performing some of those duties in my current position, but that would call for me needing some assistance with the day-to-day reconciliation and the day-to-day journal entries and the, just the day-to-day accounting-type stuff where I can focus more on some analysis and financial reporting. I just can't do it all and I'm getting behind. So that'll be a key position to try to address the DOR concerns without having it be an impact to the budget. This budget that I'm proposing, level dollar, has a zero impact on the budget. So in level service, I'm asking for the financial analyst to be full-time. Level dollar, line 26, I'm also still have it full-time. And then in the minus 2 percent, I have a reduction in hours to about 33.25 a week. And then I also cut some of my office supplies because I will be one person less. The woman that was working for me will be DPW, and her office supplies would be paid out of DPW or water and sewer, probably more out of enterprise funds. So the reduction in supply expenses is about one-fifth. I think that we can handle that over there, and that makes sense, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have a motion on the table on this?
I'll move to approve and forward to the Warrant Committee the FY '16 Central Business Office budget in the amount of level service $305,192, and level dollar $303,794.
Second.
Any further discussion on this budget?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Amy. That's all of the four, right?
I think so.
Is DPW the only one that we still have open?
Yes, that'll be on your December 18th agenda.
Okay. Okay, we're on to the approval of the reorganization plan, and the town administrator's going to give us a-
Yes.
...presentation on this.
Town accountant did speak to it a little bit, but let me go through this with you. This was a major reorganization plan. We had two vacant positions, and we have a pending retirement. So I always like to look when we have vacancies or attrition through retirement to take that opportunity to do some reorganizations. And in trying to complete or follow through on some of the recommendations from the DOR report that was back in September of 2013, I worked with Amy, Town Accountant Amy Dexter, and the Assistant Town Administrator Michael Blanchett. And we put together this reorganization plan which affects four departments. The Personnel Board has approved this. I also had to negotiate with the Clerical Union because it did have some changes to their union, and they have supported it and approved it as well. So the reason for this reorganization is to realign and streamline duties, to make offices more effective and efficient, and to also help for customer service purposes, people coming to the town hall. As Amy, as the Town Accountant started to tell you, you know, one of the DOR's major recommendations was to have the town hire in a new Assistant Town Administrator for Budget and Finance. That would be approximately a $120,000, $130,000 position. We knew we couldn't get there from here, so the next best thing for us to do was to try to come up with a plan that would meet some of those needs. So with myself and Amy taking on some of those duties, as Amy said earlier, the, some of her day-to-day duties, she's falling behind in. So we felt that this financial analyst would be able to step in and to fulfill that role. We also, in the Central Business Office, it's a real amalgamation of an office. You've got, you've got people coming for trash stickers, recycling bins, you've got accounting, you've got water and sewer. And it just was a real mumbo jumbo type of an office, and we just wanted to streamline duties and put them where we felt that they would be more effective. And so what we've done is we're moving the trash sticker sales, recycling, and compost bins down to the, and parking clerk duties down to the Treasurer's Office, which is a true collections office. And we are taking from that office duties, from the Assistant Town Treasurer, the health insurance duties, and we're bringing them up into the Selectmen's Office, and those will be now handled by your Assistant Town Administrator. One of my goals is to try to make a true HR department for the town, a one-stop shopping for people to, when they're hired, that they go to this one department as opposed to, you know, you've got to go down to the Treasurer's Office, you've got to go over to the Retirement Office, and you've got to go fill out forms in your department, and you're sending new employees all over. We want to make it a true HR department, so health insurance will be covered under the Assistant Town Administrator. In the Central Business Office, there was one employee that handled water and sewer. And in the DPW department, the supervisor and admin for water and sewer was in the DPW department. So there was a little bit of a disconnect with one being in one department, one being in another department. And the water and sewer function is really handled by the Director of Public Works, not by the Town Accountant. So we are moving oversight, not physically moving, but just the oversight of this employee from the Central Business Office into the DPW. And in addition, now that we're going to become true water and sewer enterprise funds, those two salaries will fall within that enterprise fund. We recognize that by moving some duties down to the Treasurer's Office that it would, there would be more day-to-day work and counterwork. So we have reclassified a Level III Principal Clerk to a Level IV in order to assist the Assistant Town Treasurer with those duties. As Amy, as the Town Accountant had said earlier, the unemployment, it didn't make sense to have the unemployment audit done by the Town Accountant, so we have also moved that down into the Treasurer's Office to streamline. And the backup for the payroll, which is currently done in the Central Business Office, will now be done in the Treasurer's Office. And again, that is in keeping with another recommendation of the DOR, which is to do some cross-training. So those are, that's kind of the major overview. It does involve four different departments, the Selectmen's Office, the Treasurer's Office, the Central Business Office, and the DPW. The, in the Selectmen's Office, as you know, with our Selectmen's meetings getting more and more complex and having to hold more and more meetings, the setting up and the breaking down of those meetings is taking a lot more time from your secretary to the Board of Selectmen, which doesn't allow that position to handle some of the other duties that are currently in her job description. So what I've done is I've eliminated the Level IV Senior Admin Clerk position in the Selectmen's Office, and I'm creating a licensing contracts benefit assistant position. That position is going to, in keeping with what Tom would like to have, compliance with liquor licenses, that person is going to set up a program and processes for liquor licenses for contracts to make sure that the Board's contracts are all being reviewed and that the contracts are held in compliance. That person will also, because the Assistant Town Administrator is going to be handling the health insurance, he really only works for the Board of Selectmen's Office 18.75 hours a week. With him taking on the health insurance role, those hours are going to be even further reduced. So I'll be looking for this new position to assist me with contract negotiation strategy and assumptions. And they also will be handling the public hearings for conduits and those types of things.
And Marie, with this reorganization proposal, is that costing us more money or is it-
No, it's actually, in the Selectmen's budget, it's going to be a reduction of $3,500.
Overall?
It may, it may be a little more once all the positions get filled in.
And is this reorganization, is your goal here to make it a better experience for the public or-
It's to make it a better experience for the public when they come to do their business at town hall.
Yeah.
But it's also to streamline efficiencies at town hall.
Strengthen the departments.
Yes.
Is this going to save the town any money by streamlining?
Mm-hmm.
It is?
Yes.
Okay.
It sounds like it's also going to properly align duties with the right, within the right departments.
Yes, and if you, if you come to town hall now to buy stickers, you have to, because you have that no cash policy in place, someone has to go up to the Central Business Office. If they want to pay with cash, they have to then go down to the Treasurer's Office, they have to get a voucher, then they have to go back up to the Central Business Office to purchase those trash stickers. Now, the employees in that department, when an elderly person comes in, the employee graciously walks down and does the transaction for the elderly person. So the elderly person doesn't have to go down the stairs and come back up again. So by moving all of those, the collections, down to the Treasurer's Office, it's one-stop shopping because they're the only department that can handle cash.
So we're putting experienced people in their correct roles, and we're making a better experience for the public?
Exactly.
Yes, and streamlining duties and putting duties in the right department.
While saving money?
Yes.
Okay. Like it.
Presumably the Treasurer has bought into this plan.
The Treasurer, I met with the Treasurer, and he has approved the plan, and I also met with the DPW Director, and he has approved the plan as well.
Good.
Good job.
Yeah, it looks like it'll, I mean, certainly the contracting and licensing person, you know, that person is sorely needed.
Yes.
Be a big upgrade. And in Amy's, you know, in the Central Business Office, you know, to upgrade the level of staff there is, it is sorely needed too. So I think, yeah, both of those are win-wins, I think.
I agree. And I think the Town Administrator and the Town Accountant and others who, the Treasurer and others who are involved in this, but primarily through the leadership of the Town Administrator on this is to be commended for putting forward a reorganization plan that will accomplish a lot of these goals.
Mm.
Including following up on some of the DOR recommendations.
Absolutely. That's what we tried to do. We went through the DOR recommendations and tried to incorporate some of those. And again, it's a team, I'm more of a team, team approach, so I do have to thank the Town Accountant and the Assistant Town Administrator. They were instrumental in helping me pull together this whole plan.
Good.
Yeah, it sounds like it was a good joint effort and a good result here.
I agree.
Do we have a motion?
So I'll move to approve a proposed reorganization plan as presented in a December 8 memo from the Town Administrator.
Second.
Involving, sorry, Tom. Involving the Selectmen's Office, the Central Business Office, the Department of Public Works, and the Treasurer's Office. That would realign duties and responsibilities to provide better customer service and improve efficiencies.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you.
The next item is the Assistant Town Planner. We have a candidate to approve tonight.
Yes, we are really excited about this. As you know, we, in fiscal '15, we had an Assistant Town Planner position appropriation. We went out to, we bid it internally, we had no candidates, we went out externally. We had 22 resumes. Of those 22 resumes, we called six for interviews. Of those six, four approved being interviewed. We had a sub-team of the Town Planner and the Assistant Town Administrator interview those four candidates. They called it to two candidates. We put a working team together which consisted of your Chairman of the Board, Katie Conlin, Chairman of the Planning Board, Alex Whiteside, the Town Planner, Bill Clark, myself, and your Assistant Town Administrator, Michael Blanchett. After we interviewed the two candidates, we just, we came to a consensus that they weren't the right fit for the position, and we went out and rehabilitized. We got four new resumes. Of those four new resumes, one looked good, and we thought we would like to interview him. We interviewed him, and it was the unanimous decision to put his name forward for recommendation as your new Assistant Town Planner. His name is Tim, and I'm going to butcher his last name, Zinkowitz.
Zawinski.
I knew I was going to butcher it. But-
Zawinski.
Zawinski. And so I'm pleased to recommend his appointment as your new Assistant Town Planner.
I was really concerned that, you know, based upon the amount of money and the amount of skill level that that position requires, that we're going to have a really hard time filling it. I guess we did have a hard time filling it.
We did, we did. It was the number of communities.
Looking at his resume, he seems extremely qualified, so I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Tim Zawinski, 52 Wallhut Street, Dorchester, to the position of Assistant Town Planner, subject to Personnel Board approval.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? I'll just add that he is a graduate, recent graduate of the Harvard School of Design, and he worked for a number of years as an editorial assistant before he decided to go into planning for the B.C. magazine. He's currently working just in an interim position at the Codman Square Neighborhood Development Corporation, but he has a lot of experience in, through his class work and through his recent projects in the area of housing and neighborhood development. So housing is a big, a big area of interest for him and something that he could probably be very helpful with.
He doesn't have a whole lot of experience. He has some experience.
Class work, yeah.
Yeah.
But that seems to be his area of focus through his graduate school-
Right.
-and his current position and a position he had in Somerville before.
Well, I was happy to see that he worked for Codman Square Neighborhood Development as a project manager, and also the Union Square Main Streets in some of them. I mean, they're probably the two busiest areas in the Boston location at the moment for urban development. So that's a good experience to bring to the town of Milton first and foremost, I believe. And then he has writing skills, which is essential to this. He wrote for a magazine, so.
And his references were impeccable. They couldn't say enough good things about his organizational skills, his communication skills, his, he just, strong writer. They just, great, great recommendations and references.
Well-
Could be a good asset to this department.
New groom always sweeps clean, but I'm willing to go along with it and see how he gets along for the, you know, see how he works with Bill and how he works with the town, and can reassess it if, you know, after a while, after a number of months.
I think he's going to bring some needed assistance to this department, too. It's a department that's very busy. Bill was, there is a new administrative assistant, part-time for him now, but there's a lot of projects and there's a lot of work to be done.
That's correct.
Bill's had a lot of night meetings, so it would be nice to get some additional help for him and-
He needs to get a car, I heard.
Yes, but I think Tim is going to be-
Frank could, you could loan him your bicycle.
Yeah. I think Tim will be a good addition to this department. So do we have a motion?
It's made.
Already made and seconded.
Seconded, yeah.
Any further discussion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. It's already been, it's already been presented to the Personnel Board?
It was approved by the Personnel Board last evening.
Okay. Okay, we're on to the Mass Municipal Association's annual business meeting. And this is, this is the January, late January conference that I think we'll all be at?
Yes.
I'm not sure that there's anything that we need to do for this. Since we're all going to be present, we don't need to designate anyone to vote?
No.
Okay, Town Administrator's report.
I don't, I do not have a report, Madam Chair.
Okay, I just put on two very brief things for quick updates. One is the Seasons Hospice on, at the old St. Elizabeth's Rectory. The Town Administrator and I attended a community forum that the Seasons Hospice had about a week or so ago. And they just presented some of their current plans in terms of their construction schedule, and they're, they're hoping to have all of their, they're hoping to be able to start doing some indoor work during the, during the winter.
Winter.
And they're, they're moving forward. They gave, it was not a huge crowd, it was a small crowd that was in attendance, it was held at the hospital. And they just presented a lot of information about the foundation versus the operating company. They talked about the fact that, you know, pilot is probably going to be an issue that we're going to be, or we're already starting to work on. But it was mainly about what their, what their immediate plans are, so they're, they were a little bit behind schedule getting started last spring, but, but they seem to be on track now. And I think spring is the time they're looking at having another, they're going to have another series of community forums, so I think the next one will be in the spring.
Good.
And they'll advertise it to a wide audience and try to get more people to come in. And they're looking at possibly encouraging people to be volunteers, and there's a lot of different music therapies and different programs that they presented that they'll[1747.95] and different programs that they presented that they'll be offering. So, it was, it was a good community forum, and it was a good update on, on where they're at with their construction, they seem to be moving along now with the, with the project. The 40B projects update, just to report that we were at the zoning board of appeals hearing at 5 o'clock this afternoon on the Rindolph Avenue 40B, and the board, Kathleen O'Donnell, who's working with our department heads on the 40B issues, was there to present some factual information, geographic information, acreage calculations on this alternative to the 10% test, the 1.5% test, which had come up recently at the previous hearing. So, the zoning board did vote to submit a letter to DHCD using that, indicating that we believe that the town is at that calculation, so that's something that, is, that's the latest update on, on the 40B project, so that's something that will now go to the Department of Community and Housing Development, and we'll wait to see what happens at that level.
Does anyone have anything to report?
I would just like to, you know, I'm not sure how often my fellow Selectmen here walk around the East Milton Square Business District and Central Avenue Business District, but I do it on maybe twice a month, and I get all these complaints from, you know, about sidewalk repairs, and there's a tree outside of the Sovereign Bank that's cut down, and.
I thought they were going to replace that.
They didn't yet, so I guess my point is, I think it's really important that we, as a Selectmen, it's more than just sitting around a table and approving projects and approving agenda items, we should be out on the streets, and we should be walking the sidewalks and meeting the business district, and, you know, the public in general and seeing what they want. It's amazing what you hear out there when, when you ask them how we can help you. You may come back with a list of stuff to be, to be done, but.
We've all got long lists.
But that's our job.
We're all up there getting, and we all get phone calls and emails, so, I know, I hear you, there's always a long list of to-dos.
Well, instead of just waiting for the emails to come in, we should be able to, you know.
That's what I'm saying, I think we all are doing, we all are out doing that and talking with a lot of people, Tom, I agree, there's, no matter where you are in town, there's a lot of issues, so, I agree. Anything else, anyone?
Future agenda items?
Well, okay, then citizens' big response, or future agenda items?
The only thing I think of, well, I mean, clearly a bunch of things, we've already talked about them, but it occurred to me that we really haven't gone any further with the Pilot Committee, and that was just a draft recommendation, I think we had from the.
Well, Dennis is our representative on it.
Are they ready to come forward with the final report?
Yeah, we need to, we need to read that draft and let the committee know how we'd like to proceed. They, I guess they're scheduled to come in, well, we have a meeting on the 18th as well, actually, right before the Selectmen's meeting, and they're hoping to hear something back from us, we won't be ready at that time, we're going to have to do it in January, obviously, but.
They're waiting to hear from us, because my understanding was that they were planning to come back, they gave us a draft recommendation, that they were planning to.
They wanted feedback from the Board of Selectmen.
They, they didn't make that known the night that they were here, so I didn't realize that they were looking for anything from us, I thought that we were to wait for them to come back to us with a recommendation. And we should put it on an agenda for a discussion item if they're.
We should, yeah, maybe next week, because we'll be off the meeting, like I said, right before.
Okay, so we need to clarify that. We're also going to get the Sign Review Committee to come in and meet with us, and whether, I don't know if it'll be the 18th, probably more likely January, just to talk about some sign issues that are recurring and.
It's a good idea.
Get an idea of what, what are some of the things that they're looking at, what are the recent trends, how did the changes in the BILOAR from the October Town Meeting affect, anything, and is there any way that we can make the process a little bit smoother, or ask them to look at any particular issues that maybe they're not currently looking at, that might be helpful to us?
Mm-hmm.
Any other future agenda items? Then if not, I will move that we enter executive session to discuss the purchase exchange leasehold value of real property, Zero Central Avenue and Deer Run Lane, believing that having these discussions in open session would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body, and to return to open session to adjourn.
Second.
Mr. Cohane?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
And yes, we are in executive session.